Do you have everybody in attendance? Time to move to the Pledge of Allegiance. Can we all stand? Pledge of Allegiance.
St. John's Five, United States of America. In this free, public, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hold them ready. First item of our will be to approve the meeting in Canada. There was going to change. We were saying, right? Smartu was unable to attend tonight, so we took him out of the course. And then under consent, I removed the, approving the federal report. I mean, there's a lot of differences. We sent it up to the board. Okay, do we have a motion?
Why a motion?
Motion by Stacy. Do we have a second? Second is ready. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all is favor of approving the meeting in Canada. St. John's Five, say aye.
Aye.
Who has opposed name? Jenny Carries. Opportunity for visitors to address the board. Here everybody, so we'll move on. We have some acknowledgements. We've got a list here, and I'm going to pass around some people. But, uh, special education transport staff, Christianson Bus Company and the bus drivers, advisors and the spring coaches, teachers and support staff, certificate of appreciation of health and public schools from the VFW of Missouri for paying proper respect to the U.S. flag during sporting events. So they got a certificate. Pass this around. Man Eduardo Sanchez, thank you for two years of service as student school board representative, as well as being involved in multiple groups and activities, and for being an outstanding leader of health and public schools. That's what we give you for presentation. Yeah. Outgoing board members get a little plaque from us, so they like to stand and represent. Are you too close? Congratulations. You want a picture or are you wearing that?
Ooh, yeah.
Okay, that means you gotta stay. Mr. Park, do you have anything to add?
No, thank you to all of our special ed transportation staff, Christianson Bus Company and the bus drivers, our advisors and spring coaches, our teachers and support staff, and to Eddie for all of his work and for everyone's work and time and effort for a good year. Thank you.
Okay, let's move on for a presentation on the banter. Fitz, you got something for us?
I do, thank you guys. Uh, yeah, so this is our picture that we took in Times Square. It came up a couple of months ago and kind of walked you through the itinerary of what we're gonna do and who's gonna be doing what and everything. And the trip, I have to say, was, I mean, it was amazing. I can't tell you guys how our students, in particular, really how proud I was for them to be representing not just our school, but our city, and really our entire state of Minnesota with incredible, incredible class and dignity. These kids were amazing. And it's, you know, we have relatively high expectations of how they need to act and everything, and they met and surpassed those big time. So really, you know, nothing like this can be successful without students making great decisions and just doing great things. And, you know, for a bunch of high school students to represent our town in the manner in which they did, I just have to first of all, you know, thank those guys. They were just, you know, just awesome. Not just, you know, whining, they were just, anything you can think of that kind of makes you a little bit angry about high school students, none of that stuff. It was just a, they were so mature and poised and brave. And so if you see some of the kids that were on that trip, make sure you, you know, give them some love, you thank them for how they conducted themselves. It was, it was just awesome. So, and I don't know if anyone really realizes how much stress and work is involved in putting something like this together, but literally nearly impossible to do myself. So I just wanted to make sure that I acknowledge, especially Ms. Jay, who has been there for us from the beginning and doing so much with us, you know, every little things like coming on in to recruit students for concession stand and just really, really making it work. I remember years when I would be in there collecting checks and writing receipts and all this, and it'd be like two days that we'd go and I'd be doing that and the kids would be out there and we wouldn't play for a day or two, you know, just because it was payment time, you know? And so for those guys to step up and, you know, Emily with the student accounts and everything, really, really, really super, super helpful. And again, Mr. Cork, too, just being there making sure everything goes, goes right in the planning stages and everything. So, you know, this whole year has been really, really a good year, and it's probably one of my favorite years I've had since I've been Pelican. And part of it is because, you know, you guys are playing with the people that were involved in this trip. So had some amazing chaperones. We were able to bring Stacy with us, so you guys know her well, and again, chaperones can, whoa. Let's play voodoo. Ready? But I'll just kind of continue here, just sort of joke.
It's a lot like a band function, all of a sudden.
Yeah, that's exactly right. So, but anyway, I just wanted to bring the awesome pictures that we take. That'll be on the wall forever, and, but yeah, I was just gonna talk a little bit about chaperones. You never really know what can be a deal with chaperones. Sometimes, you know, they just want to be as standoffish as possible, and sometimes they're just, go get them. And we had, again, just a beautiful, beautiful, beautiful chaperone. So thank you guys so much. Yeah, that's my main reason for being here, so thank you guys really for all your support, not just the band program, the band program itself for all these years. It's been just a really, really awesome time personally for me to be teaching in this great district with these great people. So, um, yeah, any questions at all? We basically are, I think pretty much the highlight of the trip was our, were the Broadway shows, which to me, that's the reason we go out there. And so we took, we did a little pole, was your favorite thing to do, and by flying colors, it was the Broadway shows that the kids really enjoy. And, you know, a lot of kids, oh, I gotta be honest with you, Mr. Fitz, I wasn't too excited about this Gatsby thing, you know, and, but that was amazing, you know? And so when something that you're so passionate about, you know, if you feel almost like a salesman, you're trying to sell, you know, stuff that you're passionate about, when they actually buy into it and, you know, start really enjoying it and loving it and hanging out afterwards to meet all the actors and actresses and stuff and just doing a lot of that, the kids were amazing. They got to meet some really, really great people. We sat down with a Broadway person and it was kind of funny, because I, for a while, I think he thought it was, they do a lot of different things, you know? We did a Q and A thing. You could do a stage combat workshop, you can do a dance workshop. And for a second there, I thought they thought that it might have been a dance workshop, right? He's like, you're gonna be all sweaty when we're done here. And he's like, oh, looks at the notes and he's like, oh, no. And for a second, like, well, no, we're not gonna have to, we're not a dancer, you know? But yeah, really, 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 about as good as a trip can go. And again, that doesn't happen without so much of your support and everything, and kids just making good decisions. So I just want to say thank you, and that's our little picture that'll be up on the wall. We also showed a slideshow during our, before our concert, the half hour slideshow, which, wow, man, I had never really put one of those together, it's always the students or somebody else. I went in and talked to Jill, I'm like, what am I gonna do with the slideshow? You know, we gotta get this put together. So just do this and do this. And so I went home and said, I, I could maybe do this. Well, I'm in my, in my, you know, my little room doing my, the pictures and the music, and I'm like, let's see all that box in there, and the music starts, I'm just getting teary-eyed while I'm doing this, I'm just like, this is, this is really cool. So, yeah, just patiently wanted to say thank you guys, and again, if you have any questions or anyone comes to you with questions, I'm always here to let you know how I can help. So greatly appreciated, all of you guys. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Nelson, you have an elementary principal order.
A little surge of students here come the last month. We're up to 435 at elementary. Our perfect attendance for April, back up to 271. And last month, Mr. Carter asked how many are perfect for the year. So by the end of April, we have 16. I looked that up. We have 16 people. I don't know where those 16 are for May here, but so far, that's the perfect attendance. Uh, May 14th, we had our numbers with the neighborhood, and it had many positive comments from parents, grandparents that came in. Couple grandparents said, I've never been in this part of this building before. Thank you for having us in. Thank you for doing, showing us what the kids have been doing. So it was a, I'd say, very successful time. The kids had fun, teachers had fun, we kind of brainstormed some things, what did you differ for next year? You always want to tweak things, and so we got some ideas, but they definitely had positive feedback and something, definitely want to do it again with some tweaks to it. Uh, Mr. Sorum was there, what were your thoughts?
Awesome. It was a very fun event. Um, next year, we gotta make sure the kids can't break your rules before these adults get there, though. Because I'll never look that down. I had a beat writer once, but no, it was a tough one, it was a great idea.
I got beat by third graders in a few games, so, yeah, it was, it was fun, but it's amazing when you sit down and play a game and they beat you, all the, just the grin on their face is, so, fun to see, so that was fun. Um, thanks to Jasmine Peterson for her work as a para, and she's worked a lot in club bikes last couple of years. She is moving, so she is resigned for next year. And also thanks to Nadine Brown and Florence Schmitz for their work in access. Um, and with that, we've had part-time people working access, and looking to hire Cassie Kloss that has a full-time position in our access for next year. Last week, busy with field trips. Sixth grade got off at six o'clock this morning. We're there to send them off. Uh, most of them showed up. I think we had a couple no-shows, but the rest got off. Uh, tomorrow's kindergarten trip to the zoo has been canceled due to all the animals will be inside because of the rain. So, but the rest of the field trip should be inside, except for the kindergarteners going to the zoo tomorrow. So, um, I just want to thank all the staff at elementary and for all their work this year, all the extra time they put in. And I kind of always say, everything is for the students, and if you think, keep that in mind, what you're doing is for the students first to mind, and it's a good thing, so. And then our unit four for letters will be on Thursday, so 33 of our teachers will be sitting from eight to three on a zoom all day in workshop. And just phoned out today, and Ms. Hugrude come in all excited, because they got the reports back on their ELL testing, and we had 22 elementary students graduate this year from the ELL program. So hats off to everyone that works in the ELL program. Last year, we had 16 graduate, so this year, we have 22 graduates. That's a great feat, and hats off to them. So, any questions for me?
Questions? All right, thank you. Mr. Jonaschewski, high school.
Okay, in the high school, our attendance, our, yeah, attendance is 373 students. We are up to two from April. Um, prom 2025 was a success, and you can see we did a good job in her rookie year of a pair of dice. So thank you to her and her students that helped put that on. Also, thank you to post-prom committee for creating a fun and safe place for students to go after prom. Scholarship night was last Wednesday. We gave away over $80,000. I think that number actually is higher than some last donations. Those awards are class of 2025 at scholarship night. We just have a great team that's well-ordered to be given away. Big thank you to Mrs. Lage and Mrs. Carlson for their work making that night happen. You'll see graduation list on my last page. We have 63 students graduating on Friday. Summer school will begin next Tuesday. Teachers will be Mr. Hugrude, Mrs. Fork, and Mr. Ware. Mrs. Lage has communicated with students if they are recommended to attend summer school and make up some credits. Upcoming week, it looks very easy compared to these last couple of weeks. Wednesday is last day of school. We have teacher workshops on Thursday, and then graduation is at seven o'clock on Friday. Couple of fun items. Last Wednesday, we also had shared dedication, and we honored Mr. Brueggemann and Mr. Ware. Mrs. Royson and her group of students did a great job with that dedication. Staff appreciation week was last week. We continued our grow theme, gave staff some perks, and then some little treats that go with it that help them grow. So we have some water, some sunscreen, and then sunships. Just kind of a fun way to end the year with our theme. Daisy Hall also attended the Minnesota State High School League Visual Arts State Festival, and received a spotlight on arts recognition. And Nadine Chaco de Souza and Ellie Carlson broke school records in Hobo in Florida girls. And then the last thing I have, this just came in, Mr. Marsh received a grant to buy another CNC motor. Um, I think that's a $1,000 machine, so that was a pretty cool thing for them to have in this program. He has one, now he will have two. Four consent items, resignation of Elsie Franco. This one is a sad thing for us, but a great thing for her, and kind of a fun way to grow your own. She is attending Concordia College next, next year to continue her plans to be an educator, so very cool thing for her to move on, but she has been great for us this past year.
Questions? Any questions? Next, okay, thank you. Something for our student members.
Uh, senior had a last week's schools, um, last week. Sunday, May 18th, a baccalaureate was held to seniors in the fine arts auditorium. Scholarship night was Wednesday, May 14th, in the fine arts. Graduation rehearsal was also last Friday, as well as senior cookout, but there's really good stuff to make people sad. Uh, summer student activities to begin soon, summer rec, club bikes, as well as job opportunities for students. Uh, band auditions have started for grades six through 11. Chamber choir will perform a graduation dance. Both band and choir have wrapped up school concerts.
Um, today, the boys' golf team had the varsity conference championships at home Royal Golf Club. The girls' team had their varsity conference tournament at Wild Valley. Um, the baseball team has their next game tomorrow at home against Naga. Their playoffs will start next Tuesday, and their opponent is to be determined. The softball team's next game is a playoff game, but their opponent is also to be determined. And to track, this past weekend, the girls' team participated at the true team state meet, and on Thursday, both teams are to be at the subsection meet at Millhouse State Hospital.
Questions? I don't hear any, thank you. Mr. Cork.
Okay, enrollment district wide, we heard from both principals, and enrollment's up in both buildings, which is great. We're up to 805 district wide. We started the year, or we're first number with 809, so that's good. Post-reflects that number. Uh, summer activities, we're doing a lot of planning for summer, for summer rec in our academic programming that we offer. So we're getting on staff, I think we're almost there in, for academic pieces in elementary high school, and for summer rec, which is good. Um, people are able to, or kids are able to sign up for activities on our website, so there's links out there on social media, Facebook, things like that, with our, related to our school. Special ed co-op update, just a few items here. Uh, just a few openings at our special ed co-op with the speech, mental health, and OT services at our co-op currently right now. They are working on staff assignments for next year, and what they're trying to do is keep staff in their current work assignments, and then also pay attention to the geography of the co-op when possible, which is good. Um, also, special ed co-op, notice of desire to negotiate, received a letter from the teachers' union to negotiate. So we'll start negotiations, I'm on that committee, so we'll start the negotiations at the co-op, late summer, early fall. Everything's been good. Transition, they're working on the transition of our director, and that will be good, so we're excited for our new director, but sad to see Mrs. Erickson leave. Update on the parent staff community presentation regarding sixth grade to the high school proposal, presented to the community. I'd say we had post, anywhere from 40 to 50 people, their total. Um, had presentation right away, and after the presentation, we gave a tour of the high school and kind of showing different areas of where the classrooms would be, lunch area, gyms, things like that, music band, so you can get an idea of what that would look like. And then we came back to the fine arts, and we did a Q and A, and that was a good discussion, good questions. And then at the end, we gave a opt-in for them to do a QR code, which would give us feedback of how they felt about the transition of sixth grade going to the high school. So we're gonna continue to analyze the space concerns as we move forward and keep, just kind of open for ideas of what would help to better utilize our space here district wide. So we're not going to, the question was, are we good moving sixth grade over to the high school as well? That answer is no, we're not recommending that. We're just researching, getting feedback, and we'll continue to do that over the next school year. So we'll continue on, so, which is good. It was a good, um, good discussion with our community members, and some of our staff were there and, and parents, so that was a good night. A few agenda items. I think the principals covered most of them under consent items, under business items. Just the resolution accepting donations, that's what we do now every month, to accept donations. Uh, resolution, non-renewing a probationary teacher. What we're doing is rightsizing our preschool. Uh, preschool enrollment has declined, so we are rightsizing for next year. Uh, we're gonna go from two and a half staff members to two preschool teachers, so that will be the recommendation with that, with that non-renewal of probationary teacher. So we have a part-time position right now that we're, that we're recommending not to renew for next year. Um, if our numbers increase, then we'll look on, if it positions a need, then we'll look to add that position back, so. Um, next item, resolution for membership to the state high school league, that's a yearly process, be part of that. And then Mrs. Jay talked about graduation. She talked about, I believe you said 63? Mr. Jonaschewski, yep, 63 seniors that they're recommending for you to approve to, with form, you said it's a form on Friday night. Graduation on Friday night, it starts at 7:00 PM, it's in Leeder's Gymnasium. We, the seniors and school board members and administration, we meet in the Legend Gymnasium. And then we could all be there about 6:45, and just kind of go over a little bit of the night, the ceremony, about 6:55, and then we would walk over to the Leeder's Gymnasium, and then walk in. So it'll be a fun night, good night, great celebration for our seniors, so. Any questions?
Thank you for the update. So this is gonna rank it on the first names with electricity, so. We'll bond it, consent items, approved board meeting events, April 21st, 2025, regular school board meeting. And a B personnel, so we have acknowledged the resignation of Amelia, and Nellie, and Alon Frank, we have D L L paraprofessional at the high school. The knowledge resignation of Jasmine Peterson, a special education paraprofessional at elementary. Knowledge resignation of Pete Brown, as part-time assist interventionist at elementary. Knowledge resignation of Florence Schmitz, a part-time assist interventionist at elementary. And approved the hire of Cassie Kloss, that is assist interventionist at elementary. So do we have a motion for the consent items?
How many motions to approve the consent items?
Brenda, do we have a second? Andrew? Discussion? Hearing no discussion, all is favor of approving the consent items. Stacy, would I say aye? Aye. Who has opposed name? Carries. I mean, business items. NMA has approved the resolution accepting donations. So we'll do a motion in a second, and I'll go over the resolution. Do we have a motion?
And approve the resolution of acceptance.
Okay, motion that grade, in a second. So resolution accepting donations, so whereas every such acceptance shall be by resolution of the governing body adopted by two-thirds majority of its members expressing such terms in poll. Therefore, be it resolved in the school board faculty's other schools, ISU 548, great to accept the following donation with identified below. We have Laura Quimick, uh, she donated $80 to student accounts and $80 to Lincoln T. Elvin Kahl, $100 to girls basketball, $100 to boys basketball, $100 to wrestling, $100 to math team, $50 to girls soccer, $50 to boys soccer. We have anonymous, $20, uh, year H S scholarship fund in memory of Alexa McRus. $20 anonymous, uh, scholarship fund in memory of Chip Mettstedt. Anonymous, $10, year H S scholarship fund in memory of Al Colley. Another anonymous, $10, South Rapids High School scholarship fund in memory of Rayna Bruman. And Stephen Barback, $50, Lincoln T. Bus service appropriate, $1,000 to the year H S scholarship fund. Lincoln's files, $100 to staff. So this is the resolution. Is it underhanded, resolved? Yes. Brenda?
Yes.
Yes. Stacy?
Yes.
Great, yes. Resolution carries. Next one is another resolution. Uh, resolution, non-renewing a probationary teacher. So I'm gonna say a motion, in a second. Do we have a motion? Andrew, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Stacy? Any discussion on that? So a resolution, non-renewing a probationary teacher. Grant Sherwin Snagley is a probationary teacher within independent school district 548. Be resolved by that school or independent district number 548. At pursuant to Minnesota Staff Judges 122A, point four zero subdivision five, under District Master's Relective Teaching Contract of Sherwin Snagley. A probationary teacher in independent school district 548 shall be non-renewed at the end of the 2024, 25 school year effective May 23rd, 2025. Be resolved, that written notice, be sent to said teacher regarding the non-renewal of the teacher's teaching plan. And this is a resolution. Is it underhanded, resolved? Yes. Stacy? Molly? Yes. Brenda? Yes. Resolution carries. One more resolution. So this one is to approve the 2025, 26 resolution for membership to Minnesota State High School. Anybody like to make that motion?
All my questions.
Stacy? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on this? So I'll read it out, 2025, 26, resolution for membership to the Minnesota State High School League. Resolved, the governing board or entity of Pelican Rapids High School, located in the state of Minnesota, delegates, controls provision and regulation of their scholastic activities and athletics.
activities and athletics, conferred to in Minnesota statute section 128C, 101. To Minnesota State High School League and so hereby certified to the state commission of education provided over five Minnesota statutes. Further resolved that the school listed is authorized by this the governing board or said school district or school to renew its membership in Minnesota State High School League and to participate in the approved interscholastic activities and athletics sponsored by said league and its various subdivision. Further resolved that this governing body or entity hereby adopts the constitution, bylaws, policy rules, and regulations of said league and all amendments thereto. As a minimum standards governing participation in the said league-sponsored activities and athletics, further the administration responsibility for determining student eligibility and for the supervision of such activities and athletics as assigned to the official representative identified by this government. So this is a resolution again. Andrew, how'd you resolve?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Molly? Stacy? Great.
Yes.
Resolution carries. And looks like last up is to approve the 2025 Calhoun Rapids High School graduation. Do we have a motion? Don't make that motion. Brenda? Looking for the old names? We're good? Okay. Go off the document provided.
This'll be a president.
Any discussion on this? Here you go, discussion. All's favor approved in the 2025 Calhoun Rapids High School graduation. Let's say aye. Aye. Close, nay? Motion carries. Conducted upcoming meetings. So we have June 18th, 2025, as a regular meeting at 7:00 AM. In July 2025, we may need days to do the term. Anyone else for events? Anyone not coming Friday night? Just for chairs on the stage? Mr. Molly, you have a graduation? All right, on our ten meeting, do we have a motion to adjourn? Andrew? Second. Second, Molly, any discussion? Here you go, discussion. All's favor of adjournance. Steven, would you say aye?
Aye.
Close, nay?